Lord have been, thou would be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, when they get us into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, of power and of glory, forever and ever. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C on the agenda is approval of minutes from June 15th, 2020 council meeting, and June 29th, 2020, special council meeting. Any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item D, citizen communication. Well, I only see one citizen out there. Can you please step up to the podium, sir? Can you state your name for us?
Yes, sir, Denny Clapp.
All right, Denny. Well, we appreciate everything you did for the city, and very sad to see you leave. But I know you're gonna enjoy your retirement, going on all your trips. Sounds like you left this place in very good hands with people that worked for you, that you were able to teach and work with. So, very thankful for that.
I wouldn't have left unless it was that way.
I believe that 100%. I'll let everyone have a second to say whatever they'd like for Denny. And if you want to say a couple of words, that'd be great as well.
Well, I can start off. I would like to thank all of you for trusting me to take care of such an important aspect of our lives. It's especially important when it's really cold or when it's really hot. So, it's nice for me to know that I would have electricity today to keep myself cool, because I was getting pretty hot today, working outside. But there's been a lot of changes over the years, and I hope they've all been good. And there's more that need to be made. And as things continue on, technology's gonna play a bigger and bigger role. I can remember when I graduated from my school, I gave the graduation speech, and my speech was, "There's a new world coming." And our class son was, "There's a new world coming." And it goes, "There's a new world coming. This one's coming to an end. There's a new world coming." The one we've been waiting for, coming in peace, coming in hope, coming in love. And one of the things that I mentioned was that I said technology was gonna become a major player in our lives in the years to come. And I had no idea what was gonna happen in the future, but I just had this feeling that electronics were gonna be a big part of the future. So, that's what was in my graduation speech. And it came true. And true to the point where it's kinda left me in the dust, being a dinosaur, you know? You know, starting out with Fortran and things like that. The people don't even know what that is now. So anyways, it's been a great time with all of you, and I've loved every second of it. And I just wish Napoleon the very best, and I'll still be around if anybody needs me for anything. But I wanna thank you for all your support you've given me and the things you've allowed the department to purchase so that they can do their jobs effectively and safely. And I really appreciate all of you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denny. I think you said it, you loved it. We could tell.
I did.
I mean, the hours you put in, the care you have, the way you train your people, the system we have is because of, because of your leadership. So, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You took me on that little tour one time of, I think we saw the north side sub and some other substations. And you were throwing words at me that I still couldn't, I still couldn't understand what they meant, even if I studied for a long time.
It takes a while.
Yeah, but I really appreciate it, so.
I still don't know them all.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I brought a card to the last electric committee meeting, and then you were... And I didn't think to bring it tonight, so I'll just pop that in the mail.
That's okay. Well, thank the fossil accounts, so thank you very much.
But I wanna thank you, and same as he said with the tour, when I very first started. You took Ken and I out around the substations and gave me a view at what a ring bus was, because that's what was going on at the time. I still don't know if I could explain that to anyone, but it was helpful, and a lot of what you told me at that time is becoming clearer. So, I do appreciate your knowledge and how much you were able to give to the city through your career.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. I got 11 grandkids, so it's gonna take me a while to get around to all of them and spend time with them.
You'll be busier.
Yeah, just had a new one two weeks ago.
You know, Denny, I'm looking around here. I'm probably the only one that started before you did in the city.
Yeah, you did.
Yes. Yeah, but I really enjoyed your time. I enjoyed your time with scouts. I knew we had some doggone good times.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
And the boys still remember us.
Oh, yeah. But I have to tell these guys a story. We were down to Camp Berry. It was when the councils went together. And we were down there with a big campout. And we woke up about midnight, and the tent stinks, and the tent was laying on us. Then he got so upset, he reached in there and grabbed a banana. I'll never forget it. It was something else. We both went outside, started yelling at these boys, because there was no boy in sight. They knew that they were in the wrong. Oh, yes. Some of the dandy days we had, Denny. They had Denny so upset, that he grabbed a banana, and he was eating it.
That's what I do when I get upset.
Instead of having my mouth full, so I wouldn't say anything.
That was a dandy night. And I think it just got done raining just before that. So, we were a little wet.
Yeah, we had a nine-man tent for just you and me.
Yeah, we had to have all the guards and all the food in there.
And protect it from the boys, right?
Well, I appreciate what you've done for the city, Denny.
Thank you very much.
I think 1973 is something we might have in common.
Yes.
And about that time, I was doing everything on a typewriter. And unlike you, I fear technology. And I still do. Hence why I'm sitting here. But, you know, you have done a lot for the city. And people of Napoleon, you've been a great people when you've done. And I think you leave here knowing that you've left the city in very good hands. So, thank you for everything you've done.
Yeah, thank you. That means a lot to me.
Denny, I didn't get to work with you long, but whenever I had a question or anything with the electric committee, you were always there to help. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Enjoy the time with your grandkids and family.
Oh, well, thanks.
One of the good things that came out of Liberty Center.
I gotta tell ya, I left Liberty Center in 1976. And I haven't been back since as far as living there. You know, I moved to Napoleon with my new bride. We lived here in Napoleon for five years, and then we built a new home out in the country. Her father-in-law was a builder, so we moved outside. But we're on Napoleon City Power. So, I've always had, you know, really good response time whenever there was an outage and stuff. Cut down a lot of the big trees that used to take the lines down.
Anyone else out there like to say anything? Denny, before you...
We got a message from R. Weitzel. It says, "Great job, Denny."
Oh, thanks. But thank you on Facebook.
Denny, your accomplishments extend beyond you and your city employment, too, you know, your contributions to the community and the city. So, it's like the, you know, the sports saying, you know, you leave everything on the field. Well, you know, your action's on the field, but there's also actions off the field. And you were a good civil servant through and through, on the field and off the field. So, you have a lot of accomplishments to be proud of. I appreciate that you were the one that saved the Han Center, you know, a critical corner of historic downtown. That's a big deal.
Yeah, it was a big undertaking at the time.
That's an important item for this community that you put your stamp on. And who knows what that building would be now, if anything, if you would've done this, so.
Well, I think it's all in the Lord's will that Napoleon had a stepping stone to get started for everybody to have pride in downtown and start fixing things up. It was a good feeling to see everybody start painting their buildings and make them look like they did at the turn of the century. And even today, you're guys in Napoleon, and I can be really proud of how Napoleon looks today. I really like the black light poles. They don't look like they're rusty. I like the new white light when you drive through town at night. Those are some of the things that the electric department helped with that bettered the downtown, I think. And there's a little bit to go. I left a message for Greg on the board to finish the lights. So, if there's money left, he's gonna finish painting the lights all the way across the bridge so they're all the same. And none of them look like they're rust poles. Yeah, thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, Denny.
Thank you very much, Denny. Okay, moving on to item E, reports from council committees. Finance and budget, safety and human resource committees neither met on June 22nd due to lack of agenda items. And item E, C is Technology Communications Committee did not meet tonight due to lack of agenda items. And move on to item G. We do have things on our agenda, so I guess we're gonna meet tonight, sorry. G1 is introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 027-20, an ordinance authorizing the finance director to make appropriations, appropriation transfers, transfer of appropriation to, from one appropriation line item to another appropriation line item pursuant to ORC Section 5705.40 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, as listed in Exhibit A, and declaring an emergency. And suspension is requested. Kelly?
You have a motion.
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. These are the second quarter budget adjustments.
Kelly, one sec. Kelly, one second.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, now you can go, Kelly. Sorry about that.
Okay. These are the second quarter budget adjustments. For the transfer appropriations, the first one is the 100 General Fund. This is moving money from the contingencies to the fire pension. We had a firefighter paramedic that came to Laney and HR back in 2004 through 2006. He worked in the National Guard. We were supposed to pay his pension as if he worked for the normal weekly hours when he was on active duty. So, that's about $4,000. The next two items are for Fund 271, the law enforcement education fund. These are moving money to be able to help Chief Mack with increased costs for frequency of testing.
Thank you, Kelly. I know I don't have to ask this, but I will anyway. I'm sure you've came up with something to catch this in the future if someone else would go into National Guard or something to make sure that we're taking care of it at the time that we're supposed to, so we don't run into this again in the future.
Yes, both the HR department and my payroll person are on the lookout for these items.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion for suspension.
So moved. Second.
Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
If there are no other questions or comments, Rocks, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
That has passed on first read under suspension. Okay, moving on to item G2 is ordinance number 028-20, an ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure, supplement number 2 for the year 2020, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Kelly?
Thank you. We have two supplementals for the second quarter budget adjustments. The first one is for Fund 510, the water revenue fund. This is an amount of $20,948.37. This is for the legal fees for the water negotiation. And the second one is for the 560 funds, the sanitation and revenue funds. This is to pay back the appropriation that we borrowed for the concrete crushing that was coming in more because of the pool. That in the amount for all three line items is $53,000, for a total of $73,948.37.
Thank you, Kelly. Have any questions or comments?
Is this something we have to request suspension on?
Kelly?
Yes. This will, I need these to be able to close the June budget month. That's why we had the meeting on the 15th before the other meeting, so that we could be able to have these on to suspend them so that we could close the month for June.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, make motion for suspension.
Second.
Hey, Rocks, please call the roll on suspension.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, Rocks, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
That has passed on first read under suspension. Moving on to item G3 is Resolution Number 029-20, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $25,000 for the purpose of constructing a commercial pool and to enter into a contract with Astro Pools for said construction, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. First and foremost, I just wanna say we'll only be requesting first read on this item. There are some, a few details of the contract and some of the pricing that we're still getting clarification on. So, as we work through that process, we should have something ready for the next council meeting. But this is to enter into a contract for the pool project. We will be seeking, once we start getting the final designs of the value engineered building, we'll go back out to bid for the building, the bathhouse and the clubhouse. It'll be smaller, but it'll have less bathrooms, too, because there's less square footage. And there's less square footage in the deck space on the pool side, too. So, we're able to do a little value engineering in order to keep our costs in line with what the levy allows for, without going over that. The key is come in under that and, you know, not even necessarily at the mark of what the levy allows for, because you still, there are some wear items and maintenance items that are gonna be, you know, some operational costs in the future. Kinda talked about that a little bit when we first went into the project with the pool commission and everything else. So, just, that's kind of the update right now on the total project, just that, you know, we're working up the details. But what we were able to accomplish is getting in all of the alternates that we wanted to. The only thing that we omitted from this contract is the rock climbing wall. And that could also be added in later if everything comes in where we hope it will. So, but for now, we've omitted that. You know, we've got, we feel that we've got enough of these shade structures in place as a part of this contract. And we'll have all of the features. Most importantly, we'll have all of the other features that we've discussed at the pool commission meeting. So, it's, we felt, I mean, obviously, I think everybody feels that that's, you know, it's a pool project before it's a bathhouse and clubhouse project. So, we gotta make sure this is a state-of-the-art facility. People are gonna come there to swim and play in the pool, not, you know, visit the bathhouse. And, yeah, there'll be some people visiting the clubhouse, don't get me wrong. But, and it'll definitely be an upgrade. The clubhouse site will definitely be an upgrade from what it is now, you know, newer, more modernized, little more storage, you know, things like that. So, I think where it's landing now, the building isn't as big, but it's, that was, that, so it's, we feel it's okay, and we're where we need to be. So, to advance this project and get it to the finish line.
Thank you.
If we do this on July the 20th and it passes on second read, how soon do we anticipate construction starting by Astro Pool?
Ken, do you have an answer for that?
The last time I talked to Steve from Astro Pool, he was hopeful they could get something started in September or October. And he didn't feel that that was slowing them down in any way. They're normally accustomed to working through the winter. So, he thought if they are able to start in September or October, they're actually starting earlier than what they normally do.
And the advantage of suspending is that we get the contract documents passed back and forth signed, done, and they can start ordering supplies, parts, things that they need that are, Chad, what'd you call it, more specialty type items?
Yeah, some of those items have a little more lead time than, say, if you were just gonna go buy something from, some type of pool component from Walmart or someplace else. These things have to be made. So, there's some lead time involved. But we do have time to meet that schedule still.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one. Overall, with the delay with the clubhouse and the bathhouse, would the facility still, I think that was the plan, still be ready to open for sure by next May?
That's our target by, I'm sorry, by June 1st. So, that'll be like Memorial Day timeframe. That's the target. A lot of it depends on the building. But also, you know, as Chad mentioned, yeah, Astro Pools, they're gonna be, I think, we're confident that they're gonna be okay on their timeline. You know, this, you know, the lead time for all the parts and materials, the slides, the play features, and the pumps and everything, this is specialty work. So, that's the reason why we wanted to request suspension, is to make sure that we don't slip in any of the timelines either. A delay in a part could mean a delay in pouring concrete somewhere. Some of the stuff is built in, so.
So, what did we gain from last fall when we, whatever measures we took to start funding before the levy to get the demolition done that was supposed to keep us on our timeline? Was that, in hindsight, was that probably not necessary?
You mean doing the demo early? Well, we were anticipating having the construction done at the time by this fall. And when talking with Tony, he wanted to do a sort of test of the facility. And that's a part of this, too, is you, you know, you open up a complex facility like this, you wanna run it a few times to, you know, make sure you know how to operate it so our crews know how to operate it and run it. So, the idea was that this would be under construction already. And with a hope that we'd have a, you know, call it a test, just a test run in the fall. But we're not gonna be able to do that this time around, so.
Joel?
Yep.
We had to have the existing facility removed in order to do soil borings. Otherwise, we couldn't have designed for the new pool. So, it had to be gone before we could design the new one.
That also. But I know when talking with Tony, he was very adamant that he wanted that. He's gonna have to run it. And if they don't know how to run it, they're, you know, that's, I mean, not that there's gonna be an issue with it, there's not. It's just, you know, getting the familiarity with this new, the new pump, the new water treatment system. That alone is a new feature for him. So, rather than, now there's gonna be sort of a learning curve as we open, because if we're targeting Memorial Day, and we're gonna be running up against that mark, you know, there may be some technical assistance that may be needed when we start up. So, but we'll know more when we get the construction bids back for the building side, too. So, I don't wanna, there's a lot of parts, pieces and parts in motion right now. So, you know, I feel like I'm talking delicately, but it's, that's because there are still some unknowns out there. I'd like to have more definitive answers right now, but at this point, the definitive answers that we do have are that the pool side of the pool project is, we're confident with where we stand with the contractor. We're fine tuning the pricing and the details. That's it. Right now, the design piece, we've got everything. All we need to get is, Chad, are the drawings done yet on that? The redesigned pool layout? Which is, like I said, it's fine tuning.
The pool drawings are finished. The bathhouse and clubhouse building, we worked out the details on what's going to be modified to reduce cost, but they have not finished those drawings yet. They started working on those after we made those decisions.
So, Chad, next council meeting or the one after that is when we're planning to go out to bid?
When I spoke with Peterman last week, I told them that my perfect schedule would be to take it the next council meeting. If it's not ready by then, could they have it the following? And they said they could.
Okay. So, just as a follow-up, expect that, that time break.
Any other questions, comments?
Is there a question online from somebody? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Hearing none, Rocks, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, that will move on to second reads. Item H, second read of ordinances and resolutions. We have none tonight. Item I, third reading of ordinances and resolutions. I1 is ordinance number 023-20, an ordinance amending certain sections of the City of Napoleon, Ohio Water and Sewer Rules, specifically Rules 10.1E and 11E, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Hey, Joel?
Thank you. This is nothing new to add to this item, unless anybody has any questions. How about that?
Anybody have any new questions from second read or first?
Nope.
Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Thank you. That has passed on third read. Item I-2, resolution number 025-20, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to enter into a Department of Homeland Security Public Assistance Grant Agreement through the Ohio Emergency Management Agency on behalf of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Joel?
Thank you. The only thing to add to this is that we did have this other round of CARES Act funding coming in, so we, Kelly and I have discussed this at length and we'll have a recommendation on how to use the CARES Act funds and maybe even in conjunction with these because obviously you can't double dip. And obviously, we're going to try to take care of any of our general fund expenses, so, you know, take priority, and then any other expenditures, take priority. And then if we can use them for utility purposes, we do have an inquiry into the program manager that, you know, to see if we can use it like we did with the reserve fund for the electric fund. Obviously, that's, it's a, there's a direct correlation between COVID-19 and, you know, the increase in rates, our rates bump. So that, that we can document and we have an inquiry to them to see if we can use it for something like that. We have about $203,000 total just from the CARES Act. That's not including what we can apply for out of this FEMA assistance grant. So if we can use it for some utility assistance, then, you know, maybe we can use it all or feather it in over a period of time. But that'll definitely be a point of discussion for our electric committee meeting next week. Hopefully, and we're pushing to get an answer back by Monday next week. I wanted to have an answer back today, but not yet. So we're, we're still batting around the idea of applying for funds through this grant and using CARES Act plus, you know, all of the different other little pots of money that are out there that, that are coming our way. So we just want to maximize the amount that we're able to use, even if it's a little bit more paperwork to apply for and track. Easy for me to say, Kelly. Do you have anything to add?
Do you have her muted?
Kelly, did you have anything to add?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what he said. No, I agree, Joel and I have been talking about it in a great deal amount of time and we're just waiting for a response and we're good with the paperwork and the tracking if we can get money.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That has passed on third read. Okay, moving on to item J, Good as a City. J-1, Discussion or Action Award of the 2020 Concrete Crushing Project. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. Pardon me for a moment, I'm going to pull this memo up. We bid the concrete crushing project out and as you can see on the screen, can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Bid tabs came back in. The lowest valid bid was $79,200. We had estimated originally $100,000 was the plug number. I mean, it's kind of a hard number to gauge when you're looking at a pile of rocks that need to be crushed. So, you know, they came back and said we can crush this pile of rocks for this amount of money, so that was the, that's what we came up with. The, the lowest is Gettys Paving and Excavating, believe they're out of Holland. Hawaii. Got a couple funny looks there. DNR demolition did submit one that was lower, about $5,000 lower, but it was not, did not meet our bid criteria. So we have to throw it away. And that, that's, that's, happens more often than, than we'd like. How about that? And all of this concrete crushing slated to come from the sanitation fund. And that's it. Any questions?
Is that a not to exceed number?
Chad, is it not to exceed or is that a, is it measured quantities?
That project is actually, that's their estimated total cost based on a unit price. Their unit price is $4.40 per ton, but Jeff and I will monitor it and if we start getting close to the end of our budget, then we'll shut them down. But that would mean just having a pile carryover till next year or the year after.
The end of the budget or the end of the 79, too?
We would probably look at the end of the budget.
Because the budget was 40,000, right?
The budget was 100.
Forty thousand originally.
We changed it.
We changed it to 100.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Sorry.
It started out at 40, and then we approved another 60, right? And now it stands at 79, so there was a...
Based on the estimates.
Okay. But if it's possible to spend the other 21?
Yeah, it's, it's unit pricing.
Okay.
We estimated the size of the piles based on measurements from the ground and estimating the height and the shape, and we estimated that there will be about 18,000 ton of crushed concrete when we're done at 440 a ton, which is what they bid, but we don't know exactly how much is in that pile.
Is that right, Chad? We usually spend about 40,000 every two years?
In that neighborhood, we usually come up with, try to come up with a number. We, we don't crush every year, but yeah.
Just depends on what the quantities we have, too.
Yeah, and we've had a lot of construction the last few years and we, and that pile's gotten very large. I mean, if we're not comfortable spending the 100,000 that was allocated, and I understand it wasn't in the budget, but it was allocated a month ago, we can try to cut them off when we get close to that 79,000 number, but we, I don't know, we would want direction then. Are we going to stop taking concrete? If, if we start getting large piles, I would hope to get some additional direction.
And Chad, we're, we're out of stone, too.
Yeah.
This isn't, this is material.
We're out of crushed concrete, yes. Any stone we get now, we have to go buy from the quarry.
I mean, you crush it now or you crush it later. The, the question is, is the unit pricing competitive enough or should we stop it at 79,000 and then rebid at a later date if you think price?
To buy stone, you're going to be twice that price.
Right, I get that, but you, I mean, if you, if you stop at 80,000, then are the quantities for crushing the price that Gettys Paving gave us, is that, is that a good price?
I, I believe it's a good price. I, it was a competitive bid. Everybody bid with an estimated amount of 18,000 ton because unless we go out with LIDAR, it's hard to determine how big that pile truly is, how tight it's packed in there. So everybody bid it and they were pennies a ton different on some of them, anywhere from about $5 a ton to, well, 440, 435. So I believe it's a very good price.
I guess that's, that's up to council, but I guess, you know, if you want a recommendation, my recommendation would be go up to the 100,000 mark if, if the quantities go over and crush it, get it over with. We're going to use the material. We're going to use it. We're going to have a lot of it, a lot more than we normally do. It's just, you know, it'll, it doesn't go to waste, that's for sure.
I know this is cheaper than buying stone.
Did it, yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Can I make a request at this point? Get invalid bids be specifically rejected, can reject the invalid bids pursuant to Napoleon Ordinance 06, 106.01. One of these contractors seems to be playing games. They got the contract documents or the bid documents somewhere else, didn't pay the $50 deposit that the city requires. The language in the bid documents was not quite explicit enough. It is determined to be an invalid bid, but if they were to try to push, I'd like this little bit of cover from council that says pursuant to 106.01, council can reject any and all bids and I'd like council to do so specifically for the invalid bids. And then if council does decide to approve, appropriate...
Chad, can you please boot your, your computer?
Can everybody hear me okay? So motion to specifically reject the invalid bids pursuant to Napoleon Ordinance 106.01. And then if council so chooses to, to award the other bid, to make that a specific motion as well, so two motions, please.
I'll move to reject the invalid bids.
I'll second.
Roxanne, do you have that stated as our law director requested?
Not going to go down good, sorry what you're saying.
No, just wanted to make sure that that word is in there.
106.61? The ordinance citations that?
Right.
Napoleon Ordinance 106.01.
Okay. Could you read back to the motion just so we make sure that it's exactly what Billy wanted?
Pursuant to, it's 106.21, or see to reject the invalid bid?
So pursuant to Napoleon Ordinance 106.01, to reject the invalid bid.
I heard Lori, you made the motion, did someone else second?
Molly.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to item J-2, Discussion or Action, award the Glenwood Avenue Waterline Improvement Project. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This was also bid, had a lot of competition here as well. The engineer's estimate was 510,000. The lowest bid was 512,921 and requesting award of the bid. Is there any questions on this?
I've never heard of this company. Who, who are they?
I've, I've never been on a project with them. Chad, have you worked with them in the past?
I personally have not, so I contacted their references and they actually just finished a waterline project in Archbold on Miller Avenue and State Route 66. When I spoke with the engineer over there, he said that they were very great to work with. The owner of the company handled all the paperworks and all the surprises that came up. The foreman was very good. The inspector for the village was very happy with the work they did and my past experience with that inspector is, it's hard, it's hard to make him happy, but he was happy with their work, so yeah, I'd like to award them the project.
I'll make a motion that we award the project. Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Thank you. That has passed on third read. Item I-2, Resolution Number 025-20, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to enter into a Department of Homeland Security Public Assistance Grant Agreement through the Ohio Emergency Management Agency on behalf of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you. The only thing to add to this is that we did have this other round of CARES Act funding that we have the final amount for, the 203 that Joel mentioned, and our court received a grant in the amount of $55,371 for COVID-related expenses.
And then we would request suspension on the 20th so that we can appropriate, so the court can start reimbursing and buying the equipment that they asked for.
Ross, can you read that back? I saw you were writing it down. So would that be just the one motion for directing the law director and that's all going to be in one?
Yeah, that all fits one.
Okay. Did you get all that? Because I don't think Ross did, but...
Not even close.
Me either. Okay.
You got it, Rox. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Item J-4, Discussion or Action, Acceptance of $500 Grant for SRO School Threat Assessment Training.
Joel, read the comments.
No. It says Joel already muted.
Says you are muted.
Why is that? It was odd, I never, I just stopped sharing the screen, so it was, I got muted.
All right.
So we were all muted.
Were we all muted then?
Yeah, the whole.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, how far do we need to go back?
We don't.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so...
SRO, the...
Yeah, I'll just read that one again since that's what we're talking about. J-4, Discussion or Action, Acceptance of $500 Grant for SRO School Threat Assessment Training. Who wants to take this one? Chief? You want to do it, Joel? Come on up.
Thank you, Council President. This is training that's put on by the state that part of our MOU is to continue looking for grants to help with costs with the SRO and so forth. The state has this program, this education program out there for threat assessment that kind of gives a detailed plan of how to assess some threats, you know, with the school violence and the sort of thing. Brad Strickland went through it, so we got the $500 grant. I actually anticipate getting another $500 minimum later this year. I went through it and Lieutenant Leggs planning on going through it. And it's, we can get three people for, per agency at $500 a person. So it's our hopes that there will still be money left to give me minds. I missed the first deadline, so.
Okay.
But it'll be used for, threat assessments will be used for the SRO, things like that, for security enhancements around the school.
So this $500 actually covers the whole class for each individual?
Yeah, there was, the class was free and now this, that money can be used toward the school and any kind of security enhancement or, you know, that type of thing that the committee comes up with.
Nice. Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Chief.
Take your pick there. Rox, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Item J5, discussion or action, review rates for mulch. And we will refer that to the Water and Sewer Committee and the Board of Public Affairs.
What fund does that come out of?
Sanitation.
I thought the sanitation fund was fine.
It is.
Okay.
I think part of the reason too is the use, the amount of use that it gets to and delivery. We make a lot of deliveries.
Okay. Item 6, discussion or action, review rates for unlimited pickup. And again, referring that over to the Water Sewer Committee and the Board of Public Affairs. Item J7, discussion or action, June 2020, replacement pages to the codified ordinances. Have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
So moved.
Second.
Have any questions or comments? Rox, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Molly? Yes.
All right, moving on to, go around the table here. Start with you, Kelly.
Thank you. For the court grant, I may need to ask for an ordinance for, to set up a new fund for the 20th, if that's possible. They want us to segregate the money, but I think I can do it in a capital fund and create a sub-fund for the court, but I'll let Billy know if I can. And then just a reminder that the deadline for filing the income tax is on the 15th of July.
All right, thank you very much. Ross?
Not a lot for me. My wife works July 4th night, so I have the privilege of being at home listening to the police scanner, and you guys were making a whole heck of a lot of calls. So thank you guys for that, and thank you to the fire department for being on standby for us. So that's all I had.
Ken?
Our non-fireworks are great.
Thankfully, they all shut off outside city limits.
Yes.
And there are two large holes in the pavement right in front of Lincoln Law Office that need to be filled. Somebody's going to come out of the Eagles one of these nights and step into one, and we're going to have a lawsuit.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just the only thing I have is the economic, or executive session for economic development.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that I'm loving Park Street. I kind of really like not having a stop sign right there, too.
Don't get used to that.
Well, I'm just saying, it took two times to get used to it, and I'm like, this is nice. And then just, I've had actually two citizens asking me about if there's some sort of action taking place at the old Riverview establishment there at.
Yes, there is activity.
Okay, so that's the reason.
And I'll just, I could just say allegedly, the new owner wants to turn that into a bar, and right now they're working with Wood County on their permits. So they're following all the rules on their renovation. So they are actually inside actively renovating.
Okay, okay.
And the exterior too, where there's supposed, I've never been back there, but there's river access back there, too.
Right. Okay.
For which place?
The old Riverview by there at APN.
Okay.
There was a lot of junk in the.
Yeah, I drove by there yesterday, noticed that.
Thank you.
Jeff?
How are we coming on Grace Way? Do we have any kind of timeframe?
Yes, we do. Now we do. We actually just got the update from them. And we'll just say it's chalked up to COVID.
Sure.
COVID delay. So Chad, do you have the, I don't have it memorized right now. I just, actually just signed the supplemental today, changing the dates. Chad, do you have the date?
The best that I have at the moment is they were planning to come in the week after fair, simply because at the time, no one was sure what was happening with the fair. However, Thursday, they alerted me, they might bring a crew in to do the limited underground on that job this week, because the gas company is finished and out of the way. So we could see some action this week, but they weren't there today. We're going to check again tomorrow, and hopefully get moving soon.
Just curious, and I hope we don't ever run into the situation like Toledo Police Department did this last weekend. It really breaks my heart to have a patrolman killed in the line of duty. One of the campground owner's brother was on duty, he's a Toledo Police Officer, and he was really upset the other morning. And I said, well, Travis, we'll all get through this somehow. So my condolences to the family.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you for that. Molly?
Yes. I have had a couple citizens reach out to me about the pool timeline. I think people are wanting to know kind of what's going on, why things aren't happening. I don't know if we could put something out social media-wise, or some type of signage by the pool.
Yeah, I like the social media. I think it hits a lot more people.
Yeah.
Plan on, we'll put something out. At least by the end of the week, we'll.
Dan?
I have a couple of questions. One, just wanted to know what the status was of that reciprocity tax survey. Have we got any responses to that whatsoever?
Yes, yes, we did. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Dustin, since he's on.
Yeah, so we've gotten about 149 responses, and it's about 55, 45, and five undecided, roughly.
Fifty-five, let's say.
Forty-five, four, and five percent undecided.
That's a straw, kind of, maybe call it a straw poll, because we don't, you can't verify. You can't verify who's.
And some that are just, they didn't the exact address, and they just put like a road street name.
So. Close the door. In addition to that.
Sorry.
I'm muting you, Dustin.
So we're saying 55% in favor or against?
Against.
Against. Forty-five in favor and five undecided. Is that what he's saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of people that took the poll. I would say that one, the ones that didn't, you know, we're, and Dustin, maybe you know this, how many of them said that they would show up to a public meeting even? Do you have that separated out?
I didn't know that one. I didn't calculate that up yet.
Okay.
Probably five.
Thanks, Dustin.
Okay, I just wondered where we were at there and where we're going to go with that. My other question, either for the city manager or the mayor, and I don't know if one of you know this, but this question came up to me. Have we lost any businesses or restaurants to this point because of COVID-19 here in the city?
None that I'm aware of. Restaurants?
I don't know if it's necessarily due to COVID, but I think, well, Mike's Antiques?
No, he asked restaurants.
Restaurants are businesses, either one.
Yeah, it's a different question. Yeah, Mike's Antiques is no longer there.
And I hear that just stuff is going to fold up to. Cricket, the Cricket Cellular Store. Yep. And I don't know if we can really categorize it as.
And then the motorcycle game moved out to town, too.
That's right. The iron coffin's moved out.
Okay. But it may or may not be related to COVID-19.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all.
Probably one or two that we aren't thinking of, Dan.
Pardon?
There's probably one or two that we're not thinking of.
Okay. Okay, that's all.
Okay.
There's a couple of businesses moving in, though, too. You've been to some ribbon cuttings lately, so I mean, there's, there's still, that's why I say it may not be COVID-related even, it's just.
Okay, my question just came up, and then we've got the responses to the survey, so now we need to see what to do next. Okay, that's all.
Okay, thanks. Joel?
Thank you. You know, we talked about rate, rate reviews for all of our utility, water, sewer, and electric. COVID hit, and we stopped because we weren't sure how that was going to impact our revenues or operations even, what was going to happen. Fortunately for us, we're doing a lot better than other communities. We're still down on the electric side, and that's evident with the, with the rates and the way they're headed right now. But on the water and sewer side, we are very fortunate that we are above where we were at least in the previous two years. So our June production rate, and we're basing this off of production, the June production rate was eight percent higher than the previous two years. So, but we also did have a main break. I don't know if that contributed to it or not, so main, main break on Glenwood. And I think there was a small break somewhere else, too, wasn't, wasn't a very large one. So, I mean, if, you know, maybe that contributed a little bit to it or not, but, you know, for the water and sewer side, we're, we're looking solid in, you know, going forward, at least with, with where we are now. Other places are actually, you know, like the, you know, here that I talked with the city of Bryan quite a bit through all of this, they're down even further on the electric side and on the water and sewer side. So we're very fortunate. I just, just wanted to point that out. And so we're going to resume those rate reviews, at least for the water and sewer side, and kind of get those, you know, see where we need to be. You know, we have the renegotiated long-term control plan. You know, the court came in and did a cost of service study two or three years ago. You know, at the time, he was using old long-term control plan numbers plus water treatment plant numbers. So that's obviously going to be a big, a big change on how we calculate what we need going forward. So and then on the water side, you know, we've got, you know, a couple, a couple of question marks out there, but we got enough information that we can get that started. So on the electric side, that's a full-blown cost of service study. So I think by focusing on water and sewer right now would be better, kind of let things play out a little bit more on the electric side right now because of the, our current state. I think it'd be wise for us to just kind of see if things catch up even more and maybe start it later in the year. So that's number one. Number two, we had a peak alert today. We've got one tomorrow, and we may have one Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So just wait and see, see how the weather pans out, but it's, it's hot. It's good for electric use, so it's good for what we were just talking about. But it's also, you know, it's also important that we don't have people using during peak hours. That way we can keep our transmission rates and capacity rates lower for the next years, when next year's rates are set. So, you know, if you think of it or hear anybody, you know, please keep pushing that word out there. It really does help. That's all I have.
Thank you. Billy? All right. Chief, I don't want to leave you out. You're the only one out there. Do you have anything for us? Okay, I checked. All right. I have a question about Haley Street, where they redid Haley in that section. Is that completely finished?
Yeah.
Okay, I noticed the same thing. That was like in front of the armory when finished that area where there's some, some major puddling in a few spots. And it just seems like they would grade it a certain way, so it's going towards the sewers, but.
Does it hold puddles, or is it only when it rains and it just takes time for it to drain out?
Where, I saw a couple of times, it looked like it was, it was holding there, so I can, I can talk to you about it, be a little bit more specific where it was.
Yep.
So. And then 108, south of the bridge, do we know when that's going to be completed?
108 south of the bridge. Um, we did check on their schedule. They stopped for a time period. I think everybody saw that. They stopped due to the state fiscal year. They weren't making, the state wasn't making payments to them, and it's an ODOT job. I think their completion date, Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, but their completion date is October. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's all we really have to go off of.
Well, then is there something that we can do to make sure that they correct where the sidewalks were handicapped accessible? Because, I mean, I know it was brought up before. It was brought to my attention also, and I guess I assumed they were going to be finishing it soon and thinking, oh, yeah, they'll be fine.
Yeah, did they, they didn't put any asphalt wedges or anything to make a correction?
No, not at all. What, what do we, what can we do to ensure that they will get that done, or is that something that if they don't take care of it, can the city do something and then bill them?
We can put a patch in ourselves. I don't know the answer to that. Chad, do you know the, what the engineering rules say, or do we?
The issue is, it's a state of Ohio project. I can reach out to the state tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate that.
Sure.
That's all I have. Have a motion to go into executive session for economic development.
A motion. Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Molly? Yes.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Rox, are you ready too?
Yep.
All right. Do I have a motion to come out of the executive session for economic development?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
There was no action taken there. Moving on to item L, approved payment of bills. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills shall stand approved.
I'm going to, I need to call Kelly on a few things, but I'm happy with what they are. So expect a call from me tomorrow, Kelly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, they stand approved. Have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Molly?